Oh, no one's, can I just give her french fries? We can wait to eat ours.
Hi. Oops, sorry. I'm fine. Yeah. Well.
Not complaining.
You're hot. Range? Well, I was gonna shut that off on fire.
Okay. I think we're just about there, folks.
Let me just turn it up this up here.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at five thirty. So, I mean, in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. We're all here except for Dennis. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yeah.
Bruce.
Go ahead.
Um, gotta add charge point renewal and, um, reason five letter of commitment. For grants.
Hi, Don.
Hi, it's I'm. These are so loud, that's amazing.
Hi, Don.
I'd like to add a truck discussion under item two. Department.
And we need to add the building committee update under, would that be old business? Since we formed the committee at the last meeting, or would that be? New business.
Old business, building committee?
Yep. We met in May and we were just gonna bring the council up to date on that.
So, time I wrote mine on paper, am I good?
Okay.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to touch base on, um, I don't know, do I need to add that to new business? I just wanted to touch base on the nuisance.
On what?
Nuisance ordinance.
Nuisance?
Yeah.
Would that go on there? Okay. I know Al has the nuisance.
So, we might have to postpone that.
Yeah.
Until the next.
Okay.
So, never mind.
Never mind?
Yep.
Okay, leave that alone.
Okay.
Any other ones?
Oh, I just wanted to touch base on the content. To comprehensive plan?
Okay.
On where that's at, if we.
That probably should go to old business. We've discussed that before.
At the last meeting that I was in.
Okay.
Okay. Got everything, then? Okay. I think I'd be looking for a mention to approve the agenda with the changes. I will make that motion. Wait a second.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign, motion carried. Okay, next item, consent agenda. A and B claims minutes of the session and council meeting on May thirteenth. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carried. Next, update liquor license renewals for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. One establishment has not completed paperwork.
That's right, I just wanted to give an update that just, they've been sent in at one, one of the four places of Ness.
That's just for information for us.
Right.
Okay. Is there any, any discussion there?
Is there, so they're aware of it, they have the paperwork, they just haven't turned it in?
They were sent two notices in the mail. I called them twice and one time they came in and I reminded them every time that they still need to bring in their liability insurance. Because the rest of their paperwork is in, they paid. But they just have not yet given me copy of their liability insurance. So, I couldn't forward it to the state.
So, it's all pending? That one piece of information?
Yes.
Is there a deadline for them?
Mm-hmm. It should have been sent, but now, um, the liquor license renewal July first.
So, are they able to sell at this point?
Um, their license will run out at the end of this month.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning on selling, any business brought forward? Dennis is here?
I don't know.
No, there is the update.
Uh, there is for me on my part of planning and zoning. I wanted to actually talk to Dennis about it, but that's fine, that can wait. But it's regarding the SDI buildings that's on our property underneath the water tower. I had touched base with K O E and Dennis is aware of it too, it's the planning and zoning committee chair. But, um, I know K O E have sent out an email to SDI warning them to fix up that building. And I believe he gave them a timeframe of fourteen days, but that was like the last month. So, I just wanted to touch base with, um, Dennis. I'll reach out to him tomorrow. But I just wanted that to be on the record that that building needs attention and SDI owns it and they need to.
We can bring that up at the DMZ meeting.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Which is money, is that correct?
Yeah.
Anything else on finance zoning? Moving on, fire department business. Calls for May. Three medicals, one with intent, three ambidays and two fires for a total of nine. Two truck discussion. Steve was at our meeting the other night and we've got a nineteen ninety-four tanker out there that's in pretty rough shape. We've patched the tank on it many times and there's basically nothing left to patch anymore. So, the next time it leaks, it won't hold water and and there's some other issues going on with it and I think it's time to start looking for a new truck. Thinking of applying for a FEMA grant next year when it comes around in June or July. They open up and maybe they're closed in September. So, I would be looking for permission to apply for that because it runs pretty fast. So, I would like to just get out in front of it and start the ball rolling on purchasing a new truck.
That's a FEMA grant, is it?
That would be a FEMA grant, so, uh, our portion, the truck's probably gonna run in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars. Our portion of that would be five percent.
My question to you, uh, you said the deadline for that app, for that grant opening would be June or July of next year?
Yes.
Is it too late this year?
Yes, there is, there's a lot of work involved in it. There's no way to catch up at this point.
Sure.
Okay, you'd like approval to go for the grant then?
That and we also have one in our truck fund. We could keep our eyes open for a nice used one. But those are gonna go pretty fast for a nice one. So, how would you want to handle that, you know, if one comes on the market tomorrow? And I, not, it's not gonna be there in a month when I come back to the council meeting for a renewal. So, how would you like that? Or maybe not interested in it.
What does a used one, one?
About two hundred dollars.
About two hundred, so.
Compared to a new one at three?
Yeah.
The FEMA grant cover it enough?
Nope.
So, we'd have to pay the whole two hundred pounds?
Yep.
And it sounds like we'd be a lot better off going after the FEMA grant for our new one.
Yeah. Okay, there is money in that truck fund and that, I don't know if that will hurt us when we apply because we have so much money in that truck fund. I don't know.
How much is in there?
I want to say about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So, we've got the money to buy the used truck, pretty much.
Yep.
And that fund is just for?
It's for equipment, but we, but we call it a truck fund.
So, there's two situations here. We have a hundred and eighty thousand that would pay for a new use when it were to come available, if you do tomorrow, per se. Otherwise, we'd have to wait till next year to apply for the FEMA grant.
And we're not in any danger because of our new truck is also a tanker tanker, or tanker pump in one. So, if our tanker goes down, we still have expectancy. All waters. But it's just, it's, we don't have, we won't be able to haul much more. We only deal with haul point on the gallon, six ounces. So, there's, that old truck is gonna start making money with us, so.
The used truck, we, we could get sooner too.
Yes, if you could find one.
If you could find one. Can you, um, be searching for both of this, for the used one as well as apply for the FEMA and go whichever comes through first?
Yep.
Or is it one or the other?
Nope. I, I, so I would be looking for a used one up until the time we apply for the FEMA grant next summer.
Okay.
So, if used is where you wanna go with it, that's, that's definitely something we can consider.
So, we could approve you applying for the FEMA grant and simultaneously looking for a used truck up until the time you actually apply for the FEMA grant.
Yep. That, that's basically what I was looking for tonight, yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion to that effect?
I will make that motion.
Wait a second.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
One, one thing, if, if you found one and depleted that one ninety, would that affect the budget at all, a lot?
It wouldn't cut, that money is not a budget.
That's more kinda what you want it for now.
It's the same as the company, yes, yeah.
Okay, that's it.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carried. Did you have anything else for us? Thank you.
What happens to the old business?
The old business. Or whatever you decide to do, it's, but that's typically what we do.
Sure.
Police department. And, uh, police chief's not here.
He did ask me to mention something for him.
Okay.
Um, um, I mean, he has a police report in the nuisance list and then he also said that he responded to over twelve residents that had lawn grass and going forward, he will issue citations.
Going forward what?
He'll issue citations for lawn grass.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else from the police?
That's all he had from.
As far as the nuisance list is concerned, do we have copies of that?
Yeah, should be, yeah.
Okay.
Moving on. Public works department. Bruce.
All right. Reports on the page following the nuisance list. It's, uh, we got halfway through the meters now, again, starting where discovered the halfway mark. No violations, the slow charger used twenty-eight times, twenty-five of them between the May nineteenth and the thirty-first when the fast charger was down. And apparently it's back up and working again. So, I have on that. Do you have any questions? Otherwise, um, speaking of chargers, we've been, on the slow charger, the, um, their cloud plan renewal ran out in October of last year. Kind of just been stalling off because they wouldn't be made. The quotes were kinda messing around, they, um, they weren't being, or decent about committing. I tried, they wanted to put on a warranty plan with the, the cloud plan at the same time because, um, basically they charge a dollar a day for the cloud plan. I questioned whether he even needed it, but then one day I was sitting over there and it turns out that, um, even though it's a free charger, these people can't use it unless they swipe a card. And if we don't pay for this, they're not gonna allow them to swipe the card to turn the thing on, so they got a silver barrel on there, I mean, even though we're not charging for it, they've got a way of making a dollar a day out of this, right, so. If we're on this, we knew until, um, the nineteenth of October, it's three sixty-five, so they're gonna go back to what we did based so far since the last one. Or seven twenty-nine, we save a dollar by doing it. Another year, it would be good for till, uh, ten nineteen of twenty twenty-five. So, I just, um, do you, I guess, does anybody think that we need to to buy the warranty on the slow charger that's been kinda, I haven't actually, but pretty bulletproof along the way, but it's six hundred dollars a year, I think. They're warranty, if you wanna go extra on that, but this thing here, I think we probably should, should get it so people can use it when the fast charger's down. Just gonna.
Then the motion would be to?
Then go ahead and renew it if you guys are ready for a year or two, we might as well overcome it, it's probably got like five years left.
Charge point renewed?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
The biggest question is whether we wanna do the warranty to it the same that I have not.
Huh, so with or without the warranty?
Right.
Do you think the warranty's really necessary or is it?
I.
Uh, you, it's like every other warranty, yeah.
Yeah, I, I tend to say no.
Yeah.
My luck is, well, I have an actual, you know, we wish we had, but you never know, I guess. In this case, we'd say well, I know, you know, so.
Okay, so, renew the charge point with or without a warranty? Does somebody wanna make a motion?
I just wanna clarify something, Bruce. So, we have or have not had a warranty up until this point?
We have not.
Okay.
No.
And it's been how many years?
Uh, twenty nineteen, I think it was.
So, we've gone this far without a warranty?
Yeah.
Well, then I would make the motion to, uh, renew without the warranty.
I would second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
No discussion.
I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carried.
Last thing I got is, um, a letter. D J Allen is asking us to, um, submit towards second phase of the grant we got last year and, uh, towards solar panel stuff. We could potentially get a hundred thousand or maybe even more at this point. And then a thirty percent tax credit that we can get as a refund. This letter commitment that she's asking for is, there's a copy there if you wanna see it. Oh, you got it, okay. If we get it, we'd have to go ahead with the thing, but the way the time, I think it's August before this one, we'd approve the other one that we, the letter that we gave is until later on and the chances that are less than this one, so we could use them conjunction, they all, all the cards fall together, but we just have to make some kind of decision. Because of the time of the council meeting and when this is due, I'd be best if we bring it up this time and just get a print on one way or the other and if you're all right, I think I'll send your copy of the letter and we'll be done with it, so. Discuss the next one, but.
Right, and that's per the email that Bruce just sent us about two hours ago. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read it, but, um, so basically it would, it would just be the, uh, the go-ahead to move to the second step for what we've already started.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to make a motion on that?
So, I will make a motion to move forward with signing the commitment, um, for region five development commission?
Wait a second.
I will second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All I have at this point, unless you have something for me.
Thank you, Bruce. Administration department.
Um, just an update on the website. We were, are still in the process of trying to release cityofmontley.com from Joker. They, um, the account, Bruce has done a lot of digging into who, who created the account, who owns it. It was created several years ago by the clerk at the time and they will release it if she will sign a paper and give some sort of ID. So, we dug around, she is willing to sign the paper. Um, Bruce, Bruce got in touch with her and she did sign the paper, but, um, was not willing to give her ID and I don't blame her for that. But we were able to find past records of, um, signatures saying that she was a signing authority and, um, for council members with mayor signatures and her signature and then one saying that I was with my signature and Pat's signature on it and we thought that would be plenty to cover the bases for, instead of an ID. So, if it's gonna happen, we got the, um, emails sent to them, when was it, Friday?
Friday.
Friday night and we haven't heard back yet.
They said five business days to give us.
Five German business days.
Right. So, all of this is so we can keep cityofmontley.com instead of going to cityofmontleymn.com and the biggest reason for that is if we go to cityofmontleymn.com, we have to change all of our emails. Again.
Again.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I spoke with her this afternoon also.
Who's, who are we talking, addressing here, Carrie or Darcy?
No.
Before that.
Oh, Terry.
Yeah.
Terry. Oh, okay. That's, yeah.
And, um, Wyatt Meyer was the other admin on account. But he wasn't able to have it either.
So, we're basically waiting to hear back from them.
Yeah. Looked good. And hopefully everything was good.
Yeah. Extona update, I just had some questions, being new to the position and not really understanding what Extona exactly does and what we're paying for. Um, so I had a meeting with them today and April and Bruce attended and they explained everything and, um, we have a, um, yearly subscription, we pay them a monthly fee and then there's a yearly subscription, which was in the contract for, um, addition for a firewall and that's coming up due now too, so, they explain why we need that. And, um, they are gonna send an IT guy here to, to talk to myself and Jenny and, um, answer some questions we have about the way the computers are running and clean things up for us a bit. And then I have an email in here as far as our Facebook page, police department Facebook page, um, the last council meeting was May thirteenth and on Sunday, May nineteenth at nine eighteen PM, I got an email saying that, um, from Darcy saying that, uh, she was able to add Al to the Facebook page. So, that's been taken care of, I did not have to contact the attorney.
Okay. I reached out to Al too and I'm just wanting to kinda update everyone here. He was added and then what he did, he has to send a request to the other administrators that are listed on the page to remove themselves. And as of today, Darcy has, but the other person has not. So, I think the reason maybe, the reason, I thought it was a, a good idea to contact an attorney is because if the former chief stays on as administrator, they still have access and to me, that's kind of a security and confidential issue. And that would be my only question for the attorney is if Al, if we agreed and chose to move forward with just deleting the page as a whole, if that would be violating anybody's First Amendment rights or, you know. That, that's the only reason I thought we needed to contact an attorney, but maybe you guys know the answer.
Um, I guess I didn't understand it, are you saying that, um, now that Al's an admin, to take the previous admin off, that person has to agree to be taken removed?
It's pending approval from them.
Oh, I thought it was just pending approval from Facebook, but actually from the person being removed.
They have to agree, so we have one past employee off and the other one has not removed themselves.
Wow, okay.
Just an update on that, so.
After numerous attempts.
It's been going on for months and months.
Well, I think something should be done because it'll probably go on for several more months.
So, I don't know, Tammy, I mean, do you, or do you guys think still contacting the attorney is needed just in case Al chooses to delete the page? I just feel like I'm more comfortable if the attorney tells us, you know, if we consult with her a little bit.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to get her involved to ask her questions, but I know Al is pretty apprehensive to the point of wanting to delete it because there's over a thousand followers.
Yeah.
And to regain those followers again.
Right, yeah.
You know, so it's kind of a gray area when it comes to that aspect, so.
Yeah, and I don't think we're saying he's going to, but if.
But I mean, if we did delete it and then start over again, you know, how many of those followers would come back and be like, oh, well, the whole Al Jason thing and, you know, it, it shouldn't have to be like a rivalry.
No, and we shouldn't even have to contact the attorney.
Right.
Sounds like what we should do is authorize Al, if necessary, to contact the attorney in order to get the thing taken care of.
Yeah. I think that that would make sense, um, if it continues, I mean, like Steve said, it's probably gonna, I mean, it's been how long already?
Somebody like to make a motion to authorize Al to contact the attorney to resolve the matter if it's.
Does Al need to be discussing for that?
I, I wish Al was here.
Right.
Because I don't know whether he'd be comfortable doing that with.
That's what I mean.
Well, he could maybe sit down with Tammy and.
He said what?
Do it together, maybe.
If he's not comfortable, he doesn't have to do it.
Yeah, he doesn't have to do it, or we could have the city clerk also, Al or the city clerk.
Okay.
Whoever to contact the attorney if it's necessary in order to resolve the matter.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
I will make a motion to that effect.
Wait a second.
Oh, second, huh.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same sign? Motion carried.
I just wanted to mention that I, there were invoices, um, in the, in the packet, um, for Banyan payroll, I did have two hours of training with them two weeks ago, which was very helpful. And then also, two days last week, Terry Osterman came in and did clerk's training with me, which was very helpful.
Very helpful.
Yeah. And, um, Sourcewell will reimburse us for half of, full of those. And then there's a couple of upcoming training opportunities I put in the, in the, um, in the packet as well. The twenty twenty-four Clerks Academy, that's September twelfth and thirteenth and that has a fee of two hundred and fifty dollars.
That kinda got cut off here, Terry, so is that the one that you're talking about?
Yeah.
Is it a two-day thing, do you, if you go to one?
Is it a two-day thing? If you go to one, you have to go to both? Or is it one or the other?
It's two-day, full day.
Okay.
But, I mean, it's only seven miles away, so I wouldn't need lodging.
Right, so you want approval to attend that? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the clerk's training.
Wait a second.
I second that.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Motion carried.
And then the other one is for the Region Three upcoming meeting on July eighteenth, which is also in Staples, and that has a cost of thirty dollars.
Motion to approve that. I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Both, same sign. Motion carried.
And then there's, just for informational purposes, the state demand for information. We can contest the information that they have in here, but it's based on the last census.
Oh, okay, I got you. We're at six hundred and eighty for population.
Okay, did you have anything else for us?
Just that I did include a letter for each of you about the updates with the healthcare opt-out stipend. And it's a council decision, I did contact the league, but I believe I wrote that note.
Yep.
Is that something that we can take action on next month? Or would you rather make a decision right now?
Is, what would be the benefit of waiting?
I'm just asking, either way, I'm okay.
Um, I would prefer to just get it, you know, have the council make the decision, and then we can move forward.
So you're on his plan now, correct? And that is a family coverage, and between single and families, the same from...
Yep, it's the same.
From our...
Yep.
Okay. I'm comfortable with the stipend personally. It's in our personnel manual, that's, you know, she's an employee and she's opting out. That's just my opinion. I'll go there. Is that a motion, or?
No, I'm just discussing.
Sure, I agree with you. I mean, if you're fine with your healthcare as is, so...
You want to keep it like it is then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I checked, you know, like, we talked to Morrison County, one other neighbor in the community I talked today. It's just, it's a really unique issue, because not a lot of small communities have had to cross this bridge. So the research I've done, you know, I guess, maybe it's something to, not sure, we look at it again.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve leaving it as it is?
So I'll make a motion to approve Tammy's stipend in just leave her healthcare as is.
Wait a second.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else for us?
I think that's it. That's it.
That's it, thank you. Okay. Old business. Under there, we have a comp plan.
I was just wondering, since I was absent for last month's meeting, if you could fill me in on where we stand with rescheduling that? I know that I had said it was you had done it.
We've kind of put it on the back burner temporarily.
Okay.
Because we were also busy with more immediate things.
Sure, so that's tentatively to be rescheduled for a different date, but we're still looking at doing it this year.
We're still looking at doing it.
Thank you.
Building committee, can I chime in on that?
Building committee update, that's next under here.
Okay. Okay, so the building committee consists of the department heads, and then Councilmember Johnson and myself. And we met in May, and we just kind of walked around, looked at the city hall, discussed, do we start talking about options of repairing certain things, maybe, how would you say it? Redo the inside, or add on, just very preliminary. So we started discussions on that. I think we all agreed that the roof is in desperate...
Roof is, it needs to be fixed.
Yeah, it needs to be fixed, that's been leaking for a long time. So now is that a good time to also look at other options, and do we try to make it more, you know, easier to...
I think we kind of decided to reach out to somebody to give us a plan, just a preliminary plan. Their ideas anyhow, a professional that we might have missed or overlooked or something.
So meaning, plan, we need quotes to do the job, or just?
Get a price of what it would cost for all options.
So the roof is one, what are some others?
That's needed.
We talked about discussing what our needs were and see if they thought could be fitted into this building, or do we need to change it up?
Sure.
What's our best option, anyway?
Because the way all the rooms are now, we all know what they are. An architect or something can probably say, hey, do this, do that, and we might end up with a lot more usable space, rental space, kitchen space, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And the roof clearly needs to be repaired, so do we look at, I mean, we need to find out if we're gonna change the structure first, you know, change shapes or anything like that before you go putting the roof on here, and then find out if we got to last it away or whatever, you know? It was kind of a part of the discussion.
I guess one, walking around, you know, looking at everything, a couple of concerns of mine were I feel like the fire department needs more room, I mean, they're running out of space, and there's a lot of stuff over there. And, you know, we talked about moving offices to...
Yeah, I was just gonna touch base on that. Where we stand as far as rearranging in here even comes into play, but I mean, if we're gonna look into stuff like restructuring.
Yeah, I mean, so it's not just repairs, but it's also, you know, what our primary use for the city hall is, and what can we do to maybe generate more community pride, and maybe, you know, just have it look nice.
Fixing the sign.
Yep, yep. And then also, it leads me to, and I, the back room, where MCEO has their stuff stored. When the, was it the water main that broke? Once the city employees got back there to clean it up, they had to move a lot of stuff out. And it's still out. No, their stuff is still in there.
You were talking about the MCO, there's a valve in the back.
No, I mean, like, the files and stuff that are associated to the fire department.
Stuff to put that stuff back in or not, so...
So I'm talking about the small room back there that...
Oh, this, the little room?
The Montley Community Event Organization has...
The storage room.
Yeah, yep.
We had to move their stuff, or they're gonna have to shut the water off, so it's slowing us down.
Yeah, so I guess I'm proposing that we ask them to maybe move that. It's not a real big room, but it's not a nuisance, and what if there's a fire call and they're hauling stuff in an hour or two? I mean, it's just...
Where would they move it to?
The next room.
Um, I don't know if we'd have to ask them that.
Sure.
I don't know. Maybe...
But I mean, for, it would, it would basically be for safety purposes, obviously, like you said, and you had to move stuff out of there just to get to emergency, shut off that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's... Do we really have to? I don't know how I'm gonna phrase this.
With June Fest coming up, I think we wait until, you know...
Sure.
The, the June Fest is over, and then, sure, ask them to maybe clean their stuff out of there and maybe return their key as well. That's just my opinion. But they also use the city hall for meetings too, don't you? So maybe hold on to the key.
Okay.
Okay. But that's the building committee update for me, if anybody else wants to add to it.
Good job.
Thank you, Nikki.
Sorry, I have a hard time spitting out words sometimes.
You did great, thank you.
So were you asking for a motion to?
To ask June Fest to, or MCEO to remove?
Yeah.
After June Fest?
After June Fest, yep, I'll make that motion. If we need a motion, we'll work with that.
What is, what is the motion?
To ask them to clean out that back room with the shut-off valve.
To remove their stuff, basically, okay. Is there a second to that?
There's a second to that.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. And there's no other old business on here at this time? New business? Any new business for us? The next item we have is public forum. I'm gonna read this off here, it says, "Any member of the public wishing to be heard should sign in before the public forum begins, providing name and contact info for any follow-up. Any item not already on the agenda may be heard by the council, but no action will be taken at this meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes." So whoever's speaking has three minutes to speak, which means we don't want to be interrupting them, we don't have to.
Correct.
Okay, does anybody want to speak?
Yes, Rosalie Hennin, I know that 133 Cleveland Avenue South, which is the corner of the school lot. So I'm on the commercial residential, you know, whatever. I, the school's disgusting, it gets completely gross, I mean, maybe this is a nuisance, but there's mosquitoes, the weeds, the grass in front of the playground between the two houses is as high as the fences. I mean, there has to be some kind of ordinance or something that we have to mow. There's trees growing in the, where the doors are, there's thistles, I have, I have photos. There's thistles and, I mean, just the playground, there's no way anybody would go and play. If I were one of any of those eleven clubs, groups, or businesses that is on the Welcome to Project Playground, I'd be embarrassed. And even one of those eleven should get out there and clean up that playground. The children's playground, there's trees, the thistle bushes, you can't even see the toys in the playground in there. When we had that original meeting, when that yahoo, whoever, I have no idea who it was, because nobody introduced themselves that day. He said that there would be a, there would be a playground presence if somebody upped that school. And they, whoever's hands got greased, because some, clearly somebody's did. Nothing has been done, you know, I mean, absolutely nothing. There are moles that have gone all the way up and down with the baseball, and now they're in the street. Bruce, I don't know if you know, they're right there in the middle, they've got a nice big pile. And now there's five in the last two days, and I, I mean, it's horrible. With, with June Fest coming up, I'm amazed that nobody's had them cleaned up. I mean, this is a third of the east side of the road of Montley. It, it just amazes me. Fireworks are gonna be over there, it definitely, in one of the letters too, it said if we wanted mosquitoes or whatever, to let you guys know, I think mosquito spray needs to be put before June Fest, because that's all there is over there, is mosquitoes. From everywhere around me, it's mosquitoes. I mean, even the grass in the football field is up to your knees and high. It's really, it's embarrassing. Mic, you mind if I?
That's it then?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Is that, I believe that?
Thank you.
I mean, I live in Minneapolis too, and if you'd have mowed your yard, the city came and mowed it, and you got charged with a hefty fine for it. You know, I mean, wasn't the city mowing it, and going and getting the weed killer? You know, I mean, I killed all that, huh? Thistles are not ruining everybody, that's not something you guys probably want in your yards.
There we go. Any other comments from anybody in the public? I don't hear any. We will be moving on.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And your inputs, and coming here to speak. We appreciate that.
Council forum. Anybody from the council have anything they'd like to bring forward? There is nothing, moving on. Upcoming meetings and important dates. Next regular council meeting, Monday, July eighth. Regular meeting, five thirty PM at City Hall. Planning and zoning meeting, Monday, June seventeenth, four PM at City Hall. I have one question. On the planning and zoning, my neighbor has, wants to bring something to the meeting. Does he need, I should know this, but I'm asking, does he need to let, like Dennis, know ahead of time that he wants to be here and present what he, what he wants to do? Or can he just show up?
He can just show up, but depends what he's gonna do.
Well, yeah, he wants to build a, build a home back there, so...
Okay. Actually, he could contact Kehoe.
Contact?
Kehoe.
Okay.
Yeah, and he can get things going.
Okay. I will tell him that, though.
Yeah, just having contact Kehoe, and he can get rolling before the meeting either.
Kehoe's, you know, he, he took Jay Kipsh's place, and Jay Kipsh was a go-to guy, anytime he needed...